Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Wednesday, June 12th, 2024. It is 6:03 PM. And I would like to welcome you to the Columbus City Council meeting for tonight. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
And before we go on any further, let's take a minute, or half a minute or so, for a moment of silence, or a little prayer, whatever you want to do, for Officer Jamal Mitchell, who was murdered by Mustafa Mohammed. I listened to his funeral yesterday, and I think he deserves a minute of our time. Thank you, everyone. And I make a motion to adopt the agenda for the May 22nd, 2024 City Council meeting. Is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any other discussion or questions?
Don't you mean tonight's council meeting?
I'm sorry?
Don't you mean tonight's council meeting? May 22nd is not tonight.
Did you say May 22nd?
I said, "May 22nd."
Yeah.
If it's on here, it's May 22nd.
June 12th.
Sorry.
It's okay. Just want to make sure we're getting the right agenda adopted.
All right.
Janet's on her toes.
I'm sorry, and I haven't even had my coffee here.
All right. So I'll remake the motion to adopt the agenda for the June 12th, 2024 meeting, and a second?
And this is Sue, I'll second.
I'll call for a motion? Or I mean for a vote?
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye. So we know what day we're on, and here we are. Okay. Let her be the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the May 8th, the May 22nd, the Planning Commission text step increase, and approval of the bills as posted. I'll make the motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented in the June 12th meeting packet.
This is Janet, I second.
Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Maybe we need a new calendar in the back room or something. Letter C, Public Open Forum. Is there anyone who would like to speak online or in person at the Public Open Forum? Hearing none. We'll move on to Senator Michael Kuhn's presentation. It's pages two and three of our packet. He's in the audience. He's moving up to the table. Good evening, Senator. Thank you for coming.
Good morning, members of council. Thank you for having me tonight. Hopefully, make this an annual event post-legislative session for me to come and provide an update to not only the council, but to any citizens that may be here or watching online to give a brief legislative review. Now, it's always very difficult. The challenge is to, how do I compress so many things that happened into a brief summary? We could be here all night, and I still couldn't get through a fraction of everything that went on, and that's always my challenge. So at any time, if you have questions about anything I'm talking, feel free to interrupt me. Obviously, it's your meeting, so you could do that anyway. But I'm inviting that. And if there are any topics that I don't cover that are of interest to you, please let me know, and I'll let you know what I know, if anything, about that topic. I'll try to start with the things that I think particularly impact the city of Columbus. And I know that all of you have a lot of knowledge about these things that I'm going to be speaking about, because we communicate regularly about them. But for the benefit of your residents, I'll give a brief overview. This year was a non-budget year in the legislature, which is commonly known as the bonding year. Fortunately, we didn't get a bonding bill done, despite that's kind of the central purpose of what these off-years are. And there are reasons for that, but I don't think we were particularly close on a bonding bill. Whether you view this as good or bad, the Hornsby Street project was in the draft of the bonding bill and did not get passed. If we would have passed a bonding bill, you would have gotten, I believe, $475,000 to finish Hornsby Street in Columbus. The good news about that is that there now is the precedent has been set for future bonding bills. Hopefully, that will be in there, unless you all find another way to get that done. We'll continue to try to get Hornsby Street funded. The fiscal disparities issue that the city of Columbus is facing is, you know, a mixed review on that. We didn't get it across the finish line, but we did get a hearing in the Tax Committee, as you all know, because to prepare with me. And I think that is movement, that is good news. For the people that don't know what fiscal the fiscal disparities issues I'm talking about, the city of Columbus gets hit particularly hard on an aid formula that, in a nutshell, takes a lot of the taxes from your citizens and doesn't get it back into the city of Columbus for reasons that, through no fault of Columbus, really stems from the fact that Columbus has a small population and in a growing commercial and industrial base, but does not have the capacity or the ability to keep its residential base up with the growth of its commercial and industrial base. And that hurts Columbus on the fiscal disparities program. I'm trying to find a solution to that. And one of the things that we want to talk about before we go into next session, when we could take another stab at it, is the approach that we used this year, the right one that we want to do next year, which would be a state aid, which is what we did, a state aid package, so that we don't mess with the formula at all. That was a strategic decision we made. It's a relatively low dollar amount. But my concern and why we will want to discuss about this is depending on what the budget forecast is going into next year, and depending on the size of the structural deficit that we'll be facing in the state of Minnesota. It's not whether we'll be facing one, it's how big it's going to be. Any kind of state aid or spending is going to be even more difficult to get across the finish line. And so perhaps we want to take another look. And I know we've discussed alternative methods to addressing this problem. And I assure you that we'll address, we'll continue to try to address it. We just may want to reevaluate our strategy. And I think it's premature to have those talks right now. It kind of depends on what the budget forecast is going to look like. But that's something I wanted to raise with you. The other thing of particular interest to Columbus was the sports betting bill in the legislature. And I'm sure you all know that that did not pass. And it was really a whirlwind of activity. And I was happy to be actively engaged in that process, even if it was just behind the scenes and not out in front of the cameras, fighting for Running Aces and the 644 people between the hotel and the casino that Running Aces employs, plus the horsemen that rely on Running Aces and to make sure that Running Aces is in a healthy, economically viable situation, which also greatly benefits the city of Columbus. We were able, through negotiations, the bill that was moving was terrible for Running Aces, as you know. It would not give a sports betting license to the non-tribal casinos, including Running Aces, which would have caused a significant revenue hit for Running Aces. We were unable to negotiate a license for Running Aces due to the immense tribal lobby at the Capitol. However, we were able to negotiate into the final form of the bill funds for the racetracks, Canterbury and Running Aces, out of the sales tax revenue generated from the sports betting. And more importantly, it wasn't an amount sufficient to offset the decline in revenue. And most importantly, and the hardest negotiating point, was that we finally got Running Aces the flexibility to spend that money in a way that works for them, rather than the tribes dictating how they could spend this money. And so ultimately, by the last weekend of session, we had that bill in a point where whether it passed or didn't pass, Running Aces was going to be okay. All things being considered, it's perfectly fine that it didn't pass. But it wasn't a wasted effort. So when that comes back again next year, we don't know what the political dynamics are going to be at that time, given the political races this fall. But hopefully, we'll be able to get that in a place where it isn't going to harm Running Aces when it comes up. So that was a bit of good news. Some of the other things I'll talk about, I did a presentation at the Ham Lake City Council, and I really did a deep dive into the transportation. I won't do that here. Ham Lake has Highway 65 needs, big time, still, even though the ones at Blaine got addressed last year. But one thing that you probably want to know about here is that the, there is money, and I want to be precise, 11.35 million was allocated for the Small Cities Assistant Account, which you'll want to look into. I think that because of your population, you're eligible for, based on the formula of that new funding, which, I hope I'm right about that. Your attorney will correct me, I'm sure, if I'm wrong. But the way I read it, I think you can take advantage of that, and hopefully, it will be put to good use. There was also a transportation funding from last year. There was a shift that you can use that now for debt service if you would like to bond. I don't know if that's anything you're interested in, but that is now allowed. Some other things that maybe the public, it's not specific to Columbus, but might be interesting. Motorcycle lane splitting now is allowed. Parameters. There is a red light camera pilot program, which I'm not in favor of, but it is coming. It's right now, it's just in Minneapolis, some Mendota Heights, and also some MinDOT highway work zones. So your residents might want to know about that. I'm uncomfortable with this kind of surveillance, and I think it's, at least it's on maybe shaky constitutional route, but it's out there. You can no longer, and this would be for, I suppose, I don't know if it would directly impact the city, but it could. You can no longer tow for parking tickets anymore, no matter how many parking tickets somebody gets. There's a lot more that I will go into. One of the big problems I see with transportation is they're robbing the trunk highway fund to fund things that are not trunk highway expansion, which I think is very unfortunate, because you would think with all of the growth in government that we've had in a $72 billion budget that the state of Minnesota now has, that we could at least have enough money to properly take care of our state trunk highways. One of the reasons we don't is because they use the gas tax money that should be going exclusively for roads and bridges, for other things. And I have a laundry list of other things that I won't go into, because it'll take too much time.
Give us a couple of them, please. Bicycle paths?
Yes, that actually is one of them, now that you mention it. I think the most unconstitutional one, because trunk highway, the gas tax trunk highway funds is in our state constitution, is they're using it for truck parking at private businesses on local roads. Now, they'll say, well, this is a safety issue to pay truckers, but you could pay them to stay at a hotel, too. The bottom line is you shouldn't be using trunk highway funds to do it.
No.
That one is blatantly unconstitutional. They're using it for things like greenhouse gas emission analysis. They're 20.1 million to on new MinDOT buildings, which I'm not sure if you all are aware of what's going on in St. Paul, but there's a lot of unused offices right now. I don't know why that would be a need over actually using it for highway funds. 22.5 for a new State Patrol headquarters, which is a legitimate thing, and I'm pro-law enforcement. And, you know, I think the troopers need that, but it should not be paid for with trunk highway funds. If it's important enough, prioritize it from some other revenue source. And then there are specific projects for Minneapolis, bike and trails and that sort of things, a couple of rest areas, get some money. Just, and then it adds up. There's a whole bunch more. But these are things that should be going to trunk highways. It's a core function of our state government. And just a little microcosm into kind of the misprioritization, I would say, of how we spend our funds. But some other things that will probably irritate you as a provision now for, if somebody gets pulled over for, say, a broken taillight or something like that, which they can't do anymore. But if they did, or something malfunctioning, there's now a grant program. Rather than ticket them, you give them a voucher, and the taxpayers pay for them to fix whatever's wrong with their car. So you could apply for that, but as a city, you probably wouldn't get it, because the grant programs are given to preferences for people in geographic areas that have historically received underinvestment and have high poverty rates. And so as with both things, Columbus isn't going to qualify for a lot of these things. There's a few things. The Met Council, there's some transparency requirements, a detailed report. I co-authored a bill that would abolish the Met Council. That, of course, didn't get a hearing, didn't pass. But I'm going to probably be, that'll be an annual bill that I probably sign on to. Zero emission buses. So look for electric buses in Minneapolis at some point. One really, really good bill that was in the transportation line. Your residents might like it, because it's for snowbirds or military personnel, or it's a secondary address for renewing your driver's license. You're going to renew your driver's license, but then you're going to head down south to Arizona, Florida, whatever. You can, it was really a pain to get that done before. Now, it'll be a nice, easy process for that. So that was one shining example. Now, there's a whole lot of other stuff that I could get into. The paid family leave adjustment might be something the city wants to look into. There was, that was a very controversial bill last year, which was an increase in the payroll tax to establish this new paid family leave program. It was very predictable. We predicted that it was, their forecast for how much it was going to cost was way low. And that proved to be true, $735 million low. And so the program was going to be an increase of a payroll tax of 0.7% to the employer, 0.7% to the employee. Look for that now to go up to 0.8%. And then a couple years later, 0.93%. And I would say that that will probably even go higher, because that program's going to cost more than even they're thinking right now, is my prediction. So that was unfortunate, another tax increase after the $10 billion tax increases they pushed through last year. Which, for reference, anybody watching, we went into last year with a $19 billion surplus. That is now pretty much gone. And $10 billion of new tax increases, plus more tax increases this year. And we are now facing structural budget deficits going into the next biennium. We don't know exactly how high that structural deficit is going to be. That's going to depend on our economy and some other things. But we went from a record historic surplus to back to deficits in one biennium with tax increases. Very, very unfortunate.
Excuse me, Senator. May I interrupt? Are they all smoking crack, or what? How can this go from a $19 billion surplus? And then next year, we're going to be in the negative? I mean, what's our logic? I don't understand.
That the state budget went from $52 billion to $72 billion, which represents a 39% increase. That is the short answer to your question of why we're in the predicament we're in unsustainable growth to government.
And where does the money go? Bicycle trails and parking lots, or what?
Across the entire spectrum of what the state spends money on. Everything got a lot more money. Now, some more than others. Some legitimate, some illegitimate, depending on your perspective. Some things that state government should be doing, but many things that state government should not be doing, in my view. And I don't deny that there were some needs out there. There were some things that needed to be addressed. We could have done that with a $19 billion surplus without raising taxes very easily. And we could have done it even providing some tax relief with part of that surplus, and still address key issues that needed to be addressed. And so, but there's not a short answer. It went everywhere. Housing was a really big winner. Education was a really big winner. And again, schools, you could make an argument, needed more funding. But the way they did it was unfortunate. I don't think it's going to get to the root causes of some of the struggles that our schools are facing right now, which is getting a little far field at a city council meeting. But yeah, we could talk all night about misprioritization of finite public dollars. We're stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And I know you all do a really good job here in the city council, understanding that and being very respectful of taxpayer money. Unfortunately, I don't believe we did that at the state of Minnesota, not nearly as well as we should have. Another bill that probably got a lot of press is the Uber Lyft bill. I know, I don't know how big Uber Lyft is in Columbus, probably not as much as Blaine. But it shows you kind of how dysfunctional our state Capitol, our legislature is. They created a problem with Uber Lyft. The city council of Minneapolis and Uber Lyft, Uber and Lyft were threatening to leave the state. Rather than the state coming in and doing the responsible thing, which would have been state preemption, saying, "Sorry, city of Minneapolis, you cannot dictate the transportation policy of the entire metropolitan area. That should be within the purview of the state," which should have been done. They instead accommodated Uber Lyft drivers. And essentially, what they did is they took independent contractors, which is what Uber Lyft drivers are. They essentially made them employees. And not just employees, but they wrote their benefits into state statute. And so they get, under state statute now, a dollar and 28 cents per mile and 31 cents per minute. And that is written right into state statute, which is crazy. You pick out one sector and just decide, they're not even state employees or anything like that. Say, "This is what they're going to get." And so I guess we're in the position now where every couple of years, when they want to raise, they come to the legislature, they hire some lobbyists. And ultimately, what it's going to do is it's going to increase the costs of those services by about 20%, is the bottom line. So that was an interesting bill that I thought maybe you all might, your residents, might be interested, because it just shows that when you have activist mentality to your job, those are the kinds of things that happen. You know, I will talk a little bit about the process as well. I try not to be partisan. It's really hard, though, when there's such an abuse of the omnibus bill process in St. Paul, where an omnibus bill, for those that don't know, is when you package a whole bunch of bills into one bill. There's one yes and no, go or no. That process was abused beyond belief, this year in particular. There's always been omnibus bills. And to be fair, both parties have used that, whoever happens to be in the majority. This one has really gotten out of control, because what they were doing, a typical omnibus bill, let's say, has 50 or 60 bills in it, maybe more. And they were combining three omnibus bills together. And they would regularly do that. So, and subjects that have nothing to do with one another. And so that is unconstitutional under our state constitution. But unfortunately, our Supreme Court, our state Supreme Court has not properly enforced that rule. And that has allowed the legislature to abuse it. For example, this year, they put agriculture, the agriculture omnibus bill, the commerce omnibus bill, and the energy omnibus bill, all into one giant omnibus bill. And there must have been 200 bills in there. And there's one yes or one vote. So how are you going to hold your elected officials accountable in that kind of scenario? You don't know how they're voting on anything, because they masked their vote behind some omnibus bills. Transportation, housing, and labor were packaged together. And so this is not good government. We need to do better than this. And then at the end of session, I'm sure a lot of you heard about the chaos that ensued in the legislature in the final hour of session. And that resulted in a 1,432-page mega omnibus bill, which had about eight omnibus bills packaged together. They jammed through in the last half hour of session. And we didn't even have an opportunity to read the bill. There was no paper copies available. The reviser's website had crashed. Many people couldn't even get it online. There's no way. And they just ran it through. And so I'm still sorting through that. We have a general idea of the omnibus bills that they packaged together. But honestly, I haven't even gotten all the way through it yet. So that was very disappointing, which I thought your residents might want to know about. But some good news. You know, we got the school resource officer situation squared away. We got them back in our schools. You know, some things that your constituents might find important. Sanctuary state bill was killed that didn't go anywhere. So there were some successes. I personally did get seven bills through that I was the chief author on into law, which, if you're in the minority party like I am, is something that I was proud to be a part of. And despite the challenges and the partisanship, I was still able to accomplish some things for my constituents. Let's see here. I could go on and on, but I've been taking a lot of time. I'd be interested in talking about what you all want to talk about.
Yeah, no, I just had a question on that. So you said you were able to get seven bills done, so there must have had been some sort of bipartisan partnership on that. Were you able to work across aisles with, you know, both parties on those seven bills? Is that how that got done? Or was it just having the right amount of votes on your side of things?
There is some bipartisanship that does take place in St. Paul. Now, it's not on any of the issues that you're going to read about in the paper or see on TV, which is why I needed to adjust my expectations, being in the minority party, to focus on local issues, things that will benefit my constituents, things that may not be partisan in nature, and try to work with the majority party to get those things accomplished. And I was able to do that. Now, a lot of times, what happens is you work in a bipartisan way, and you get a bill heard, and you get it into an omnibus bill. Then for me, I end up having to vote against most of the omnibus bills, because, one, I don't believe them. And, two, there's probably more bad things in there that I disagree with than good things in there. And that, again, gets to the lack of transparency and accountability. Five of these seven bills, I believe, I had ultimately had to vote against myself, because they were included in omnibus bills with 100, 200 other bills.
Sure.
But I view my job in those situations as getting my bill into the omnibus bill and working with the other party in order to do that. And I have established some good relationships, some good working relationships with some members over there. So bipartisanship isn't dead. It's just very dysfunctional. And with the overall process, it's extremely partisan. But on individual bills, there's still some opportunities there. That's, is that answering your question?
Yeah. So I guess what you're saying is you got it into the omnibus bill, those seven, but then you were forced to vote against it for party reasons? Is that...
I wasn't forced to vote against them. I chose to vote against them, because when I'm evaluating an omnibus bill, it's kind of like a package.
Sure.
Is there more good things or more bad things in there? More things that I agree with, more things that I disagree with? More good things? More good things for my constituents or more bad things that my constituents won't want? And so with every single omnibus bill I've ever voted on, there are bills contained in there that I agree with, that if they were a standalone provision, I would vote yes on.
Sure.
And so, you know, and sometimes it's even worse than that. There might be 50 bills in an omnibus bill. I might agree with 40 of them, but I still have to vote no, because I choose to vote no, because there might be one or two in there that are really, really bad, that my constituents would really disagree with. That kind of overtakes the rest of the smaller good bills that are in there.
Sure.
So that's kind of how that works. Now, two of them were standalone bills that I did get through on the Senate floor, which shows it's still possible to have standalone bills passed. It still happens, just not very often. So the fact that I got two bills through into law, standalone bills from the minority party, is pretty rare. So that's on that issue. Is there any other issues I have not gotten into that you all, yes, sir?
Senator, thank you. The mega omnibus bill, I thought there was going to be a challenge to that process as, against the single-subject rule. I don't know if that's happening or if that's dead.
I hope it does, because if the single-subject clause in our state constitution means anything at all, if it's worth, if our state constitution is worth the paper it's printed on, that bill violates the single-subject clause. There is, in no universe could you consider that 1,432-page mega omnibus bill a single-subject. It's just, and so, but what has to happen is, there needs to be an aggrieved party from some bill that's in there. They challenge it in court, and they raise the single-subject as one of their causes of action. Do I think that'll happen? Probably. Somebody will probably pursue that. Do I think the courts are going to strike it down? I'm pessimistic about that, because in the last 20 years, the courts just view it as a legislative matter, and you all should, the legislature should police itself. And they've really declined to get involved. And then when, you know, I won't get partisan about the judicial process, but when you look at the appointees, it would be, it'd be pretty shocking if four of the seven members, if it gets to the Supreme Court, vote to strike down. Huge part of the majority party's agenda. They should, because it's the right thing to do legally, but we'll see if it actually happens.
Thank you.
And there's a lot of other bills that passed that, what I view are unconstitutional for other reasons. And I have a whole presentation, if any of you are ever interested, I could walk you through all of them. It'd probably take too long, and they're not all things that, if you're not a lawyer, you would inherently understand. The dormant commerce clause, or the full faith and credit clause in the United States Constitution, federal preemption. But there's a whole lot of things that we, as legislators, really need to take our job more seriously, in terms of the laws that we're passing, making sure they're constitutional, both the state constitution and the federal constitution. So, yeah, it's, there's a challenge down there, but there are opportunities. There are, you know, we did have some successes. I'm very, I want to make it clear to you, to the residents of Columbus, I, it's an honor to represent you in the Minnesota Senate. And despite the challenges and the partisan nature of the place, I'm committed to representing you to the best of my ability and try to get the culture of the legislature turned around so it isn't so partisan, and that we can do good work, and, you know, be less about party and more about the people we represent. I think that would be the direction we should move in.
Any other questions? Anyone? No comments?
This is Sue. I just thank you very much for all the work that you did and reporting it back to us. But I have one question about the sports bill, which, and thank you for getting into the bill, even though it didn't get passed, what's needed for running aces. Do you foresee, like, next time, when it goes through the whole negotiation process, that that piece would be taken out? Does that, how often does that happen?
Well, technically, all bills that didn't pass are dead when we adjourn Sunday. So, Kenny, there, no bills are left over, starting next year. Everything will have to be done from scratch. So it kind of depends on who is going to author a sports betting bill and what they want to put in it. I would say, though, that given where we were, if there's anything less than that in a bill, it would run into the same problems that the bill did this year. And it wasn't in a position to pass until they genuinely started to work with the tracks, with running aces in Canterbury. And of course, all of this is going to depend on the outcome of the elections this fall, and who's going to be in control of the House of Representatives, which is on the ballot. And now, in fact, one of the Democrat senators who's running for Congress has resigned. So technically, right now, it's 33 Republicans and 33 Democrats in the Minnesota Senate. And there's a special election this fall to determine the majority of the Senate. So there's a lot, you know, that's in the Lake Minnetonka area, that district. And so what happens with sports betting is to be determined. All I can do is, again, my focus will be to get that bill in a position where, whether it passes or doesn't pass, it's not going to hurt running aces or the city.
Okay, thank you. And one other question is, is your term doesn't end this year, does it?
I have a four-year term, and so I'm not on the ballot until 2026.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So this is Janet. I just want to thank you also. I had the opportunity to work with you pretty closely on the fiscal disparities, and it was amazing to have someone so responsive and attentive to our needs and willing to go out and do the hard work. So thank you very much.
It was an honor. I enjoyed it. I enjoyed learning about fiscal disparities and...
Oh, can you say that with a straight face? He can, can't he?
He's a little twisted.
It's a challenge, and it's an ongoing challenge, and it's one, we're, as long as I'm here, as long as the voters entrust me to represent them, I'll keep working on it till we get it done, hopefully sooner rather than later.
I hope so. Thank you.
I'd just like to, Ron here, Senator, I'd like to thank you too. And I watched you on television a couple of times. You presented a good, a good cause, I think, when you were talking about the fiscal disparities. And seems like you got right into, was her, is it Rest? Was that her name? Senator?
Senator Rest.
I think she understood what you were talking about, and I thought that was pretty good. I mean, they know what's going on, so.
I appreciate that. She did give us a fair hearing. Senator Rest is the chair of the Tax Committee in the Senate. I thought she gave us a fair hearing, and once we kind of decide what direction we want to go with that, there's another opportunity to have a meeting with her, and hopefully it's a productive meeting, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
I have one more question here. So figuring out whoever, whatever party wins, so she may not be there next time as the chairman.
Well, she's got a four-year term, so she'll be there, whether she's the chair of the committee or the ranking member. It depends on the outcome of the special election.
Okay. That's what I thought. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Yeah, I guess I'll just say thank you too. And it's interesting to see the outcome of the sports betting bill after we had some conversations at an event during the day. So I think the point was received, right?
Yes. It was, I'm not going to lie, that was a stressful issue. That weighed on me quite a bit, when you have 644 people in a city that is dependent and at least largely dependent on one business. I took it personally, like, this is my cause. If I'm here to do anything, it's to represent my constituents, and this is a very local issue. So, and I don't think anybody knew exactly how it was going to turn, so I was very pleased with how the, it took a while, too long for my liking, but eventually, we got it into a good spot.
Thank you.
May I ask, Senator? So little running aces is not the biggest thing in the world. Even Canterbury is okay, but not the biggest thing in the world. How can there be so much opposition and trying to steal the power? And why do the Democrats all fall for that?
You ask a very political question.
In a nonpartisan, in a nonpartisan meeting.
I would just, generally speaking, I'm not going to appeal to anyone's motives, and I can't speak for the people that don't support, or that do support tribal exclusivity for sports betting licenses. I disagree with that. Whether or not you agree or disagree with sports betting, and there are legitimate arguments on both sides of that issue. And I've tried hard not to really take a firm position on sports betting itself, which is what the average person thought we were down there debating. Well, that's really not what was going on. It was how, what does it look like? How does it work? And is it fair to everybody? And my view was, there are 13 casinos in this state, 11 tribal, two non-tribal. If we're going to expand into sports betting, all 13 of them should have an opportunity to get a license. The government should not be in the business of picking winners and losers. And so there's obviously heavy lobbying efforts, and there's campaign donations, and all the dirty side of politics that get involved in that. Representative West talks about that quite a bit. I'll just say that, you know, I can't speak for anybody else as to why they would think that some should get singled out and get preferential treatment at the expense of running aces.
Well, then, my point is, the money that they take in and the money they pay the city is small potatoes compared to 18 million, 18 billion they just threw away, and 10 billion in the hole for next year, and on and on and on. Why pick on the little guy? Yeah.
Well, that's a great theme. Why pick on the little guy? And it's not just relevant for running aces. It's a lot of things that are going on right now, in terms of a lot of the laws that affect businesses. They may hurt business in general, but the big businesses are much better equipped to handle some of these new regulations, the Earn Sick and Safe Time Bill that now is effective, the Pay Family Bill that's coming up, a whole bunch of other things. It's the little guy that has a really hard time navigating through all these complex regulations and programs, and are ill-equipped financially to absorb some of these new programs as well. And so when I look at a lot of these things, I'm thinking of the small business owner, I'm thinking of the people that work for small businesses, in addition to the small cities and whatever. You have to think about that, because these are real businesses and real lives that it affects. And I'm concerned about our economy here in Minnesota. I'm concerned with our overregulation. I'm concerned with our high taxes. And we're first and sixth when it comes to corporate and individual tax rates in the country right now.
Well, we just had a two-hour meeting yesterday, Janet and Jack and I, about all the new programs coming on, including Juneteenth. And what do we do? Get rid of one or two people? How can you pay somebody to not come to work for six months? We're a small city, just like a small business. And who'd ramp that up? And what do we do about it? Raise everybody's taxes, or fire two people, or what do you do? And it's a serious, every small business, I was a small business person, we've been going through this for 50 years, and now here we are at the city, and it's the same problem. And it's gotten worse, worse by tenfold. And don't they talk about this stuff before they vote on it, or what?
I do.
Yeah.
If anybody's listening, is the question.
Here's another story.
Another issue is the minimum wage. They eliminated the small business level, which was lower than the big business. So if you have revenue less than $500,000 a year, you currently qualify for a lower minimum rate of wage. They eliminated that. So now, regardless of your size, of your company, you'll have the larger, which is now $10.85, I believe, which is the current minimum wage. You'll be subject to that, rather than the $8 one that you currently are.
And that's a joke, anyway. You can't hire anybody at Dairy Queen for less than 15 or 20 bucks an hour. So, so what, all it does is raise the prices for everyone, makes less people purchase, which means less people get hired. I don't know.
And it also makes it more difficult for teenagers, people trying to get their first job, because they're not worth the minimum wage.
Five bucks an hour.
They don't have the experience. And so you're sometimes hurting the people you're intending to help when you pass laws and don't think through what are the consequences of those, from a very pragmatic standpoint. And so, yeah, it's a challenging time, but, you know, we'll, I love Minnesota, lived here my whole life, and I like the communities I represent, and we'll just keep at it and try to get some more balance.
Do you believe that if we have a different outcome on the next election, that you could correct some of this? Is it correctable, or is it cast in stone? Is it too late now?
Nothing's cast in stone. I mean, any law that's passed can be repealed. And maybe the legislature should spend more time on identifying laws that should be repealed rather than adding. I didn't bring my visual aid, but there's accession law books that we get as legislators that show all of the laws that were passed in a legislative session. When we had divided government, the book was about this tall. Last year, there were four books about this tall, which shows you the volume. We had record, record numbers of bills that got through. The sheer volume was unparalleled. A lot of the residents and the citizens of Minnesota don't fully understand everything that happened in the last year.
Well, no one does, or they'd be leaving the state. The ones who understand are leaving. I've got four people I know personally who have taken their money and their businesses and gone to Nevada and Florida and Texas. They said, "We're done." And that's, multiply that over the next five years, this state is really going to be hurting.
And so when we had divided government, you know, people would complain about gridlock, and my response is, "Gridlock is okay." Because when you see the alternative, divided government is okay. It takes off the table, extremes on both sides, the bills that have no business passing on both sides. And it forces the legislature to focus on the things that are important, the things that have bipartisan agreement. And it is ugly, even divided government, and sometimes they don't get their budgets done in their special sessions, and it's not pretty all the time. But I think having that balance is preferable to what we've experienced. And I try to say, I'm not trying to be partisan here, I'm just trying to be honest in my assessment of the situation, and try to be hopeful that we can bring that balance back and get the government to focus on the core things, the core functions of state government, the things it should do. There are a lot of needs out there, but it gets lost in translation when there are so many other things. For example, $1.2 billion last year alone went to nonprofits from taxpayer dollars. Well, there are good nonprofits out there doing really good things, but there were also lots of nonprofits that were getting money that barely weren't even a year old. They were just created. No track record of success in what they're doing, no track record of managerial discipline or budgeting. Executive directors making six figures that are getting taxpayer dollars to go out and probably not do any good in a lot of cases. And that's money where somebody's getting up every morning and going to work. We can't lose sight of that. But at the same time, there are good nonprofits with track records that are doing amazing things that probably helped save the government money. But they get, you know, the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak, because of the abuse of that system. So those are things that we really need to take a closer look at, too.
Have you got enough left in you to keep fighting? Two more years?
Yes, absolutely. And if the voters will have me, another four years. I serve on the Education Finance Committee and the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee, which we didn't even get into any of the public safety. which we didn't even get into any of the public safety stuff. If anybody's interested, reach out to me. I can give you a summary of some of those things that passed. But like I said, it's an honor to be there. I get to do, I get to represent my communities. And despite the challenges, that's the mentality you have to have. Look at your opportunities, find purpose in your work. And despite the challenges, keep on going at it every day and do what you can do, control the things that you can control. And that's kind of the mentality I try to bring.
Well, thanks for spending the evening with us.
Yeah, sorry to spend much longer than I anticipated. But thank you for your questions and for the opportunity to speak. And for anybody that's watching out there, I, oh, one thing I wanted to say too, I have been doing some constituent services, working with DNR. There's, in the Anoka Sand Plain here, there's some, there's some issues with the Endangered Species Act with some protected lands that's really causing property owners and developers to have a really hard time. And I opened a line of communication with DNR to help.
They're not trees.
Find reasonable pathways forward on some of those issues. And so, if anybody out there is dealing with that, please reach out to me. Or if it's just on anything else.
Well, you're just a few months too late for us. We had, we had a butternut tree that, that held up a project for quite a few months and added thousands of dollars on.
That's 10 grand.
I don't know. We had to do DNA analysis to, to determine the paternity of that tree before we could move forward, so, and I'm not kidding you.
Yeah, there's a couple from Columbus I'm currently helping. And to DNR's credit so far, they, they see, they also want to look, especially with small property owners or small developers, the law does not distinguish again between the big guy and the little guy. So you could be having a huge development company that gets treated with Endangered Species Act the same way as somebody who owns 10 acres and wants to do a lot split. And that just becomes very cost prohibitive, the mitigation requirements that DNR has in place. And to their credit, I think they recognize that. And we have a productive dialogue going on to see what we can do to be more creative in helping the smaller property owner deal with some of these issues. So I just wanted to throw that out there. But it could be any issue. Reach out to me. It's pretty easy. Google, who's my state senator, you'll find me. Reach out. I will schedule Zoom, telephone, in-person meetings and go over whatever is on your mind as a constituent.
Any other questions? Anyone?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
But before you go, everybody, if you care to, check your calendars. I just got an invite just today, actually. Senator Kuhn is going to be at Running Aces on July 18th.
I can't comment, that's a fundraiser, so.
Oh.
I'm here by official capacity, not my campaign capacity, so.
But we can still talk to you there, right?
I will be there on.
Yep. So anyway, pencil it in. There's no meetings here that night. Thank you, Senator.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We are on to number C3, part-time employee approval. Janet, pages four and five.
It's actually pages 27 and 28, in case you're looking for it in your packet. So it's really just a housekeeping matter. We talked about this at our last meeting and this is just taking the formal action to approve the part-time position for Connor to tie us over until, particularly for the, the website management, until we finish doing sort of our organizational development. So there's a memo in here that describes it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy, Sue would be happy to answer them. And if not, I can make the motion. No? So then I would move to approve the part-time employment of Connor Keith as presented in the June 12, 2024 meeting packet.
This is Sue, I'll second.
Go ahead. I think Sue got in there first. I think she did.
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any questions, anyone? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Letter D, number one, City Engineer Report, the final water system study, which is the big green one. Look site, yes. Kevin, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Kevin Bittner, City Engineer. So as you recall, it's been a couple of months ago when we reviewed the initial report, the draft report at a workshop. And some questions came up. And so, we've addressed those questions in the final report. And so, Brian Golden here is here to basically go over the report again and to address some of the, the primary recommendations that came out of the report. So I'll turn it over to Brian.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I believe there was a hard copy passed around here too of a.
Will you pull your microphone up real close?
Okay. Is that better?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. There's, you should have had a packet go out with some slide deck, with the slide deck here. Okay, if everybody's got that, we'll just step through that. I know, I know we talked in length last time too about the report. And so, the slides we went through last time, I've updated those and kind of condensed it a little bit to focus on some of the specific things. But again, the purpose of the report was to look at both the immediate and long-term needs of the water system, so you guys can plan and budget and meet approvals from the Department of Health and then also move forward with looking at obtaining funding. So those are the purposes of the report. Going on to slide three on page two, just a quick overview of the historical water usage. Again, over the last five years, there's been a kind of a steady increase, except for the dip there in 2020 and 2021, which had been related to the pandemic, where obviously businesses were shut down and there was less water usage. The next graph shows kind of a monthly average water usage and you can see the trends peaking in summer months with water usage and then dipping down through the winter. So just a profile of your monthly water usage as a city. The next slide looks at the well capacity versus historical water usage. We did talk about this last time, but again, the important thing to take away here is there are two horizontal lines on that graph. There's an orange one with the total capacity and then there's a green one with the firm capacity. So the firm capacity of your wells is the pumping capacity if one well is out of service. And so, a standard practice for public water supplies is to, if you lose your largest well, do your remaining wells have sufficient capacity to meet your demands? And this graph is just showing that, yes, your existing wells can meet that capacity. So from here, the next slide gets into some of the needs. And this would be where I expect most of the discussion to take place. And again, at any time, just feel free to interrupt me with questions as we go through this. So one of the main system needs is the water storage and distribution. And at the last meeting, we talked about some of the challenges with the existing system, how the wells and pressure systems interact with each other without a tower. And so, that creates some reliability concerns. It also, as we look towards future storage needs, you're going to end up becoming short on system storage here as you add more and more users to the system. And so, what I want to focus on next is actually represented in the next slide, which is a water storage evaluation, looking at a 20-year design and then also just a much longer term design. And so, what this table does is it looks at the different demands on your system for fire flow, peak day usage. It, it takes into account how much water you can pull from a well. And then it calculates how much storage you should have in your system. So this is a typical calculation used. It's based on, the fire flow demand is going to be your, your biggest thing dictating how much storage you would need. That's the top line item. So for the type of facilities you have and need to serve water to, the recommended fire flow is 2,500 gallons a minute for a two-hour duration. And so, as we work our way down that chart, really the bold numbers at the bottom are kind of the indicators of what a range of storage would be for your community. And so, in 2023 there, based on these calculations, you see we're at 172,000. Your current storage is about 157,000. And again, that is storage on the ground, so it has to be pumped to get into the system as opposed to a water tower where it would be in the air and can flow by gravity. As we look to the future, we can see by 2044, that projected storage has gone up above 40,000 gallons. And then again, in the future would increase. After our last meeting, I, I took a deeper dive, kind of looking at some of this. And one of the other things that occurred to me when I started to think about the future of the system is if a treatment plant is added in the future or becomes required, and we'll get into the manganese conversation a little bit, that would start to dictate a change in storage needs for you. Because if you're supplying water through that treatment facility and you need to treat all the water, that treatment facility will start to limit your firm capacity more than the wells itself. And so, your wells right now are rather large and can provide a lot of water. If you're required to do treatment, you'd only be able to push what you can push through the treatment facility, which would be considerably smaller than your wells. And so, at that time, that would actually increase your storage need if you were only sending treated water to the system. So for example, the firm capacity of your wells was 1,400 gallons a minute. Your treatment facility would be much smaller than that, 500 to 600 gallons a minute. And so, when we look at storage, we would assume you only have the 500 to 600 gallons a minute coming through the treatment facility to supply a fire, not all of that excess flow from the wells. That is a future unknown, you know, if the treatment plan would be added. But as, I wanted to account for that in here because as we look at storage needs, we do want to think longer term and flexibility for the future. And so, at the bottom of that table, that's why you see there's two different bold numbers there. The top bold number is the storage without treatment. If treatment came and you had a limited capacity through the treatment facility, we would actually have a higher recommended storage. Another reason for that is if there was a treatment facility, the filters that would be in there need to be backwashed and the backwash water would be supplied from that water tower. And so, you would have some additional demand to backwash filters coming out of the tower. So that's another reason the storage would be higher with the future treatment facility. So, is there any questions on that? I know that was.
Well, I'm curious how, and I think I had the question last time about the, this, to show, I mean, it looks like we don't need more capacity, but it's other issues that we need to address. So I'm curious if for our future, when you list the numbers of what's needed in 2044 and 2075, does that make this number go up into here? I was trying to correlate, I don't know what 1.7 MGD is.
I see.
And over here, it's 400,000 gallons?
Yeah, so this table is stor, would be storage in a storage vessel. So how much water do you have sitting ready to be used to the system in case you can't pump water into the system from other places or in case you have a really high demand that takes a lot of water at a time? I believe, to answer your question, in the future, does the amount of water you can get from your wells, does that start to become a limiting factor where now? And I would say no.
Okay.
Not based on the projected future usage. It would take some major expansions, major industries to come in to, to put it where your wells are a limiting factor.
Okay, yep.
MGD is million gallons per day.
Million gallons per day?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for defining that, Kevin.
What's GPD? Gallons per day? Okay. I have, this is Janet, I have a couple of questions. So when I look at that historical water usage and it peaks in the summer months, so this is just in our freeway district. So most of the users and most of the water is going to be used by corporations, which are year-round corporations with the exception of Running Aces. So are these peaks really just because of Running Aces? I mean, that's a big difference between your, you know, your summer, your summer months and your, and your winter months. Because I can't think of another, I can't think of another business that would be a big user that would have that kind of swing seasonally.
So some of it is going to be irrigation. So any of your system users that would irrigate, normally a community is going to see higher peaks in summer, lower in winter because of irrigation and just outside use and things like that.
Yeah, but we don't really have that.
I don't.
So, so the biggie is for us. So, so it is irrigation.
Who irrigates?
Everyone.
But, but there's not that many residential users on this system.
So the biggie is, I'm calling it irrigation because Running Aces irrigates their track.
So I'm taking, so I'm saying besides Running Aces, is this, this fluctuation is primarily because of Running Aces? That's my question.
Running Aces is a huge factor in that, but, but the other huge factor is irrigation. So if you drive through Piner's Preserve, everybody waters their grass. They water their grass every day. If you drive through any of the other business, businesses, they all irrigate as well. So Running Aces irrigates, Ziegler irrigates.
St. Clair Lakes.
Truck, Truckaline irrigates. They all do. So, I mean, that is a huge portion of water that does not get used in the wintertime. So, I mean, you can say irrigation and that covers 98% of it. Because I, I use the terminology that Running Aces pumps water out and they water their track with it. So that's a form of irrigation in the same.
No, but I get, I get that. All right, so then my other question is more in line with, well, two things. I'm going to say the easier thing first. So looking on page four at the bottom, when you talked about overview of the main existing systems and you talked about the fire use could put too much pressure if we had to have a treatment plan, is there a way to segregate the water that goes to the hydrants that would be what the fire department uses so that that would be non-treated water? And therefore, you would not have that?
So it could, it could potentially be. So you could bypass the treatment facility and not utilize that capacity. Part of the question there is, will manganese ever be regulated as a required treatment method? Because right now, there's a health advisory index that has a recommended level, but it is not yet required.
Right. And I, and I get that. I'm just saying that if it is one that we end up having to treat for, and you were making the point that the treatment facility then becomes the rate-limiting factor, if you were able to bypass the treatment facility for any use, high, high amount of use that would not require treated water, that would mitigate that problem? Is that, is it possible to do that?
That is true. If manganese was regulated, then you would not be allowed to bypass the filter.
Even for something like fire suppression, which, who cares?
Correct. If it is, if there is a health level regulation, the, when the minute the water enters your public water system, you need to meet the limit. And so, you would not be allowed to bypass the filter if manganese was regulated as a drinking water limit in the future.
So if a fire truck hooks up to a hydrant, no one's going to drink out of it. No one's going to use it for cookies.
So, okay.
It still has to be treated.
Sure. In that scenario, you would have to have a completely separated system. So you couldn't connect it to the rest of your fire hydrant. You would have to have a dedicated fire supply line only that does not connect to any users. So if you had a connection at a wellhouse to fill a truck that was non-potable, you could set up something like that. But if it connects to your distribution system, it would have to meet the drinking water regulation.
Okay. So, so then my last comment is, I, I appreciate why we're, we're going through and looking at this study, but I still, and maybe it's further along somewhere, I still feel like the current system we have, since it's not a capacity problem, it's more of a synchronization of the pumps, et cetera. more of a synchronization of the pumps, et cetera. Before, I would be comfortable, seriously considering the cost of this, I would really want there to be a serious study of what we have and a determination of whether there could be a way to optimize what we have at a much lower cost than putting up a water tower.
And there is a bit of discussion on that in here. And so part of the problem with the system right now is there are pressure tanks that are just frankly too small to really be able to buffer the changes and flows you have. And so realistically, to address those concerns without a tower would need facilities with bigger pressure vessels. So you can manage those swings in usage. And, you know, when you have a 10,000 gallon pressure vessel, that's not 10,000 gallons of actually usable water. The volume of usable water is much smaller in there than the tank itself. So the tanks get a decent size to be able to buffer the flows out. And so one of the things we, we did look at pricing up in here is, what if you did a pressure tank system like that in lieu of a tower? I think that's really what you would have to do to make a more robust system than what you currently have. So that, that is priced up later in here. Which we can jump to as long as we're talking about it. No problem doing that. So it appears at the bottom of page five in slide 10. And so alternative one, there is the hydro pneumatic tank option versus the water tower option. And so basically, the, the expenses you would have in putting those bigger pneumatic tanks in is a larger building construction, the tanks, the piping, and then the controls and everything that would go along with changing how that system operates. Some of that stuff you'd have with a tower or two, controls, changes, and things like that would still be involved. But options one and two, they're kind of, kind of break down the cost differences. Probably the biggest difference between these, as we talk through the options, is a pneumatic tank system is going to limit future flexibility. So if in the future, you went to like a treatment facility or something like that, those pressure tanks aren't going to help accommodate a future treatment plan if you needed one. As I said earlier, usually the tower is used to help backwashing the filters and things like that. So the pneumatic tanks, although they'd serve a purpose, they just provide less future flexibility for what the system may need. That's probably one of the biggest differences I see between the two. And not that they don't work to solve your problem, but, but what you're going to do is you're adding smaller and smaller pieces of infrastructure along the way. And then you have to maintain those. And my worry is that 20 years from now, then, a different council may come in, have these pressure tanks, now need a tower, and kind of have to redo stuff. So that is kind of part of the discussion, I think, is what's right for right now and what is the best choice for the next 60 years?
Some of the bigger troubles that we have too is, we have what we're going to call capacity, right? But it's not in the right location. So if you look at the Ziegler Pump House, which is our biggest water capacity at 150,000 gallons, is on the opposite end of all of our users. If you were going to plan that out, that's not how you would plan it. It would be centrally located or where your biggest users are. So now, if running aces fills their water truck, say, by the time that water loss is sensed down at Ziegler, they've potentially shut that tank off already. So it, it takes so long for the system to figure out what's going on and where it's happening is the biggest trouble that we have. It's not necessarily capacity, it's not volume of our wells. It's that we've pieced it together to get us to where we are today, and functionally, it's just not right.
No, and I, yeah, it does make sense. And I, and I, and I appreciate that. I'm just saying that before, at least me, was willing to dive in at three to $20 million investment, depending on what you decided, I'd really want to make sure that there wasn't a way to optimize what we have at a cost, obviously, because it's not a capacity problem. Almost, almost every other city that puts up a water tower, they're doing it because they need more water. We don't have that problem. We have a different problem that I don't feel we've adequately brought in experts to look at and say, can we solve that problem without a water tower? And maybe the answer is no. But I think we need to ask that question and, and determine that. So my opinion only.
Unless you, did you, is that what you did here? I mean, did you address that problem or not?
I, we did from a, maybe a broader viewpoint, right? So as far as a detailed analysis, bringing in control people to analyze the system on a much deeper level, no, that was not the intent of this, to go
Right.
that deep into things. I guess, just to clarify one, one point there about water towers and needing more water, I, I do want to clarify something there, because a water tower doesn't provide you more water. So needing more water is not solved by a water tower, because you need the water to come from a source. The water tower typically has two main purposes. One is to buffer out high demands. And so you may have plenty of capacity in your wells, but when there's really high demands, there's too much water being pulled out of the system to keep up. So a lot of people use water at 6:00 AM in the morning, and then starting at 6:00 PM at night through night, if you have residential, obviously with industrial, you're going to have different demands. Well, you may have a small pump that can meet all the water you need in a day, but it's not big enough to supply water from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at night. Now, for you guys, that, you do have big enough wells to probably handle those peaks. So for your system, that particular need wouldn't apply. The other thing is fire equalization. So do you have enough water sitting there if a fire happens to supply that fire? And that, kind of that table I went through, that's analyzing the fire storage, which right now, you're, you're just behind on, and you're going to continue to be farther behind on storage as you add users. So that would be one reason the tower, having more storage, would provide fire protection. So those are like the two main purposes that normal communities have. Here, you actually have kind of a third issue going on, and that's the coupling together of multiple different tank systems that, as a group, don't function very well. And so instead of them having to pump into smaller tanks to pressurize the system, once you put the water in the air, the weight of the water creates pressure across your entire system. So it's a very stable system, and it's easier to operate. And, you know, one of the other benefits, as I looked at this, was, and you could do this potentially with a pressure tank system as well, that, you know, you do have higher manganese, but one of your wells is quite a bit lower than the others. And so if you have the ability to dictate which well you run more frequently, that would actually help your water quality. And so combining the system, so you don't have these different wells trying to run together to maintain pressures, would allow you to run the well that has better water quality, as maybe a primary well. And that would actually put less manganese into the system. So it would actually kind of help address the quality issue as well. That would just be one side benefit of having a more robust system that's easier to operate, is you could pick the well with the best water quality and just run that as much as possible. So I just want to clarify that, because that is kind of a common misconception that the tower gives you more water. It doesn't give you more water, it just allows you to use it when higher demands are happening.
And, and I probably used the wrong terminology. What I heard in the prior presentation was that most cities have to go to a water tower because of capacity, and capacity is not our problem.
Sure. And storage capacity is probably, probably the capacity term that would have been, I probably should have defined better.
Before we go on, may I ask? Of course, the prices are shocking to us. What's bigger than our budget for the next five years? Is there any benefit to having conversations with, brings, Piner Preserve? All the old ladies water their flans every time, three times a day? Tell them to cut her down to once a day? And tell the racetrack to fill their water truck at 2:30 in the afternoon when nobody's using water? Does that benefit our issue? Or no?
I, I suppose it could make strides towards it, but I don't know enough about specific usages and times to say that you're really solving it, right? Or, you know, if a fire happens and you have some unexpected water need that you can't control, does that then throw, cause issues with your system when all of a sudden you have a 2,000 gallon a minute fire you need to fight?
Can I ask a question about the fire? Is that, is that just measuring what they would take from a hydrant? Or is that the fire suppression in the, in the businesses? Or is it a combination of both? And the reason I ask that question is because we have a joint, a joint powers fire agreement. So if there were, was a big fire in Columbus, we'd be getting firefighters from Forest Lake, who would be filling up in Forest Lake? And as well as our own? Well, I'm just saying that that's a possibility. So it's not just like we're a standalone fire department here. We're, you know. So I, I just was curious how that fire suppression, how you factor that in when you have a, a joint powers?
So that would need to be factored in. This table is based on ISO ratings for firefighting. And so the flow rates are basically just saying, this is what you should be able to provide to fight a fire. If you have multiple different ways to provide that amount of flow, that would have to be considered aside from this. This is more setting the standard for this is what you need, and in this table, it is assumed that it's coming from your system.
Right. And I, and, and that would be true if, if we're just talking about water coming from hydrants. But if you're talking about filling up tanker trucks, or you're talking about, you know, what a business, just their fire suppression might contribute, then I, then I, it's more complicated than just the hydrant. And that's, so I was trying to understand is.
You look at, let's just say Bear Homes or Ziegler. If I remember correctly, their fire suppression runs at about 1500 to 1800 gallons a minute. So you take that as part of your demand, we're going to call it. And then you have fire trucks pulling water at the same time, you can suck out your capacity pretty quick. So capacity in the sense that you might have three wells running, but you're also pulling water that we have as storage. That make sense?
Yep.
So, so it could be, it could be that our capacity is 2,500 gallons a minute that we can produce from the ground. We can produce another 1,000 gallons a minute with pressure pumps to the tune of probably 120,000 gallons, because there's still going to be, there's going to be a point where that tank shuts off, right? So there's probably 120,000 gallons of capacity. If you're running 1,700 gallons a minute out of a sprinkler system, and there's how many fire trucks connected somewhere along the line, you can suck up your capacity pretty quick. I think that's, that's what systems are really designed to take care of, not necessarily mom and pop washing clothes and taking showers. It's designed for what the worst case scenario can be, which is why they always say too, that they take your biggest well out of service and say, that's really what your capacity is, because sometimes you might have trouble.
Yeah, so there is definitely a, an element here of being a robust public water supplier, right? And, and, you know, there is, we, we see failures in other systems that, you know, can, can the system function the way it is, right? It has been functioning, but the question is, how much risk are you willing to live with that all of a sudden it has a problem at a really bad time? Right? And, and those are some of the things, it's a hard decision for the city council, right? Because, yeah, can we get by? We can get by. But, you know, we worked in Blaine, and they had two boil water notices within a month of each other, right? And then the next thing they did was authorize tons of money on water infrastructure, because they didn't want to be in the paper again. So there, there is a level of how robust a system do you want to have?
I think that's, I, I appreciate that too. But the other part of it is that you have Columbus, that's, you know, 48 square miles, and only a very small portion of it has a water system. So you have a fire call to my neighborhood, it won't matter what the water system can provide, because there are no hydrants, we're on wells. So they're going to fill a pumper truck if they're going to do anything, right? And so, so it's a big cost to the city when a very small portion of the city is serviced by that, that system. It's a very important part of our city, it's our economic engine, I'm not minimizing that. But that's part of what we're weighing, you know, in, in a city like Blaine, their entire city is on their water system, I'm sure. Not, or, or if there is little pockets that are still on wells, that, that's a very tiny part of it.
Certainly. The, the systems are completely different, and that wasn't necessarily the point of my, my example is, and yes, the people that are not on the system, this will not affect. This is for the people connected to your system and the future people that will connect to your system. Not just the people that are connected now, but who's going to connect over the next 20 years.
Probably still just that small part of the city, unless things change with our neighboring community or the cost of, you know, what Met Council will let us do.
Sure.
To your point, Janet, we're going to tax all the people of Columbus for this small sliver of people? Or is it only the people that would be on the use of that water that would pay for this?
Only the users.
The, these projects were typically paid through your user rates. So the people using the water are the ones that would pay for it, it would not be a tax.
But I'm assuming it would happen, just like it did when we put in the infrastructure, that there would be years of running in deficit. That gets subsidized by everybody else until it's able to break even.
If you go through the state of Minnesota for funding, they are going to look at your financials, so you're not subsidizing with, it should be coming from your user rates. So part of doing the project would be having to set up your user rates to appropriately fund the debt. And that is, who should be paying for it, is the people that are benefiting from the system.
Well, it'll be, that would be an interesting analysis, because I don't believe there would be enough users to be able to float some of these numbers.
I have a question, Brian and Kevin. Do you ever see cities? I just look at it right now, we got Forest Lake sitting right next to us with a big water plant sitting there, and everybody that needs water is on the edge of them. Like you said, Janet, most of us everywhere else has got a well. Do you see cities buying water? Or?
Yes, you can do interconnects with cities that, there are multiple interconnects around the metro area. Obviously, that city has to be able to supply the extra water that you need. So sometimes they may be adding infrastructure to be able to do that, for sure.
I only bring that up because when you talk about, I don't know if it's water pressure or what, but that, a lot of that construction on Everton there by Menards, they're running another water line back there for that one reason. The pressure back in that housing area wasn't, it wasn't adequate enough.
Because of the rapid number of multi-unit housing that got.
Yeah, we added those apartments too, that really threw their water system off.
Right. And, and me and, I went with Jim, and we went on a tour of their new water plant over there, which was amazing. But I just sit and look that if you go down on 140th or down Hornsby, you can see where they're building houses and they got hydrants sitting. You can almost touch them over there. I mean, not, you know, literally, but you take Quick Trip and all that, they're getting water, there's hydrants there. And they're so close, I just wonder what the, you know, when you talk about costs.
Historically, the, this city has asked that city, at least on two occasions, maybe, maybe three, but at least two occasions, how'd you like to let us have a kind of a joint operation? And twice, they've turned us down. And I, and I'm aware of the development that's on the edge of Columbus, because they were trying to work out a deal to get more capacity, I think both sewer and water, to that western edge of Forest Lake. And it, they may have solved it recently, but it was historically a problem. There was some capacity constraint in the middle.
There was some capacity constraint in the middle of the, that had to go through the freeway system. I don't know, maybe Kevin knows more about it.
I know, I understand what you're talking about. Cause I remember that was down off of Hart Lake Drive and Grenade back there. They wanted to build, I think Columbus wanted to build a housing area back there, hook onto the water.
There had been previous discussions, both on the Columbus side and on the Forest Lake side about residential development on the edge, on the edge of our community and actually within our community. I think one, one proposal was that, that water access come through Forest Lake. I think both of those were shut down historically.
Well, it's just a question or a thought. I'm just sitting there thinking. And like you say, councils change all the time, so.
Well, and I do think from the, the graph that you show and the seasonality of the water usage, that one of the things we should think about is, is what Jesse was alluding to, which is, you know, I mean, lots of, lots of communities put in sprinkling bands or times that you can sprinkle or use the irrigation or things like that. And if that's one way to, to kind of smooth things down a little bit and, and having that conversation with running aces about whether they can fill their truck at an off-peak time, that's, I, I think those are things worth looking at and seeing if that helps the problem that you're, that you're talking about. I know it's not a forever solution, but it, it could, it could buy us some time.
That would take the stress off the system for now. And everybody drive anywhere and their water's running down the street, their sprinklers are going this way and that way, and they're on 24 hours a day, which you don't need. I haven't sprinkled a thing for three years at my house. Grass is all green. But-
I think, I think we've, we're not done yet. There's some recommendations that are a little bit different than what previous, so.
All right.
Finished, thank you.
Let us, let us finish the-
So if we refer back to, it's on sheet five, it's slide nine. And so in, what's represented here is four different alternatives, and these are the costs that were in the next table down. And so alternative one was looking at those bigger hydro pneumatic tanks to supply pressure to the system. So that, that was option one. Option two was water tower. And then option three and four had added treatment to that if there was interest in treating for the manganese, which is above the health-based, based limit. So those costs are what's represented in table 7.2 there. Now, treatment is not recommended at this time. So the numbers on the right side of the table for treatment costs, none of those are, are being recommended for treatment. There are some things you can, people can do in their homes to remove manganese if they're concerned about it. And so I think educating the users on manganese, alerting them to resources they could use to treat for it at home. You know, you can have $170 RO system on your faucet at home that, that takes out manganese. So there are options for in-house treatment of the manganese. The difference would be if down the road that becomes a mandated treatment, at-home treatment does not meet state regulations because again, once your water hits that pipe, it needs to meet drinking water standards. So if the rule changes in the future, at-home treatment would not be a viable option. And so, so this evaluation again focused, really it was looking at alternatives one and two were the, the two for consideration to address the pressure issues. And so, as I mentioned, if you're looking at those two options between hydro pneumatic tanks and a water tower, the recommendation would be the water tower because it is going to provide that long-term flexibility for the system. So if something was to be done, that would be the recommendation, is the tower, not the hydro pneumatic tanks. Because I do believe over the life of that infrastructure, that's actually going to cost you more. Because those tanks will need maintenance and then down the road, they're probably not going to be able to help the rest of your system and you may need to put a tower in anyway. But that's just between those two options. And I know there's been a lot of other discussion about other options to be looked at, so.
In your option two, what is the size tank you're recommending?
That one was at the 350,000 gallons, which going back to that fire flow table included if future treatment was added, to have some excess capacity in that tower available. So even within that option with the water tower, we could look at different sizes, but that was the 350. The, the next slide just showed three different site locations that were being looked at for facilities. These were shared last time, but sites one, two, and three shown there. And site three was, was the preferred option. It had enough space for a tower, for a future treatment facility. It was also in good proximity to the wells to allow connection if a future treatment facility was needed. So again, the final recommendations there were addition of the water tower and then no treatment at this time for manganese. And as, I kind of mentioned the funding a little bit earlier, but through the Public Facilities Authority, we've applied for loan funding for any improvements. At this point, it's just a, there's a project priority list that comes out and is published in August, September. It doesn't require you to do any projects, but it's kind of the first step in getting you on the funding list. So at the, after the April meeting, there was letters submitted to, to get on that list, just to put you in position if a project is coming. There's no need to actually do a project if you're on the list, but that list doesn't get published till September. And those for the water tower would be a low-interest 20-year loan. I think right now interest rates are about 2% through the PFA. So that would be a funding resource that could be used.
Brian, on the number three, do we have to purchase land on that? For a-
Yes. Yes.
Either way, whether we have a facility to filter or whatever, plus the water tower?
Yes. Yes. Either way. Yep. Even if it was just for the water tower, if you were going to put the tower up, it would be recommended to purchase enough that you could put a treatment facility there in the future, just so it's set up for it.
There's no, there's not a good site on land that the city already owns, so we wouldn't have to purchase it? Is, is all the city-owned property in locations that wouldn't make sense for this?
So, so some of the things that you got to look at when you're planning this is, as he talks about future water treatment, you have to run a separate line from your well to that water treatment facility. So it wouldn't, you're not going to use the existing pipes. So hypothetically, if we put it up in the northeast or the northwest corner because we own that property, if we decided that we were going to do water treatment in the future, we would then have to run pipes from all three of our wells to those locations too. So if you look at location three, that's somewhat centrally located in our water system, but also centrally located between the three wells.
This is something we have to take action on tonight or something we can talk about in the future?
Well, maybe somebody, I, I might be a little bit confused about the process. So we had a discussion during a workshop and then I thought we said, yeah, go ahead and put our name on the list. Doesn't cost anything. You can change your mind after the fact. So did that part happen?
Yes.
And then would you, would you have to have this study if they come back and say, now, now you're at the top of the list? I mean, why, why, why did we do this study if we could have, you know, if we don't get to the top of the list for two years? I imagine some of these things changed. So help me understand what we heard before, the, the priority list and then this study, how that all fits together?
So regarding the funding, they, they do require you'd have some analysis done on what options you're looking at. It, it doesn't need to be specifically this format or report, but they want some analysis done on options you're looking at. So some of the report would have been used to help put that in there. The findings of it and what you submit though, you're not held to. So later, if something changes, you can submit a revision or a different plan and, and easily change the funding.
And is there a certain time period that whatever you submit has to be current to? I mean, I know like in some grants, you know, your analysis has to be within 12 months or, I mean-
Yeah. There, there's no specific prerequisite on this. So this funding list, once you're on it, they'll keep you on it for five years, whether you do a project or not. If you do a project though, there are steps to take to kind of move you farther up the list. So as of right now, this is just the first step in a placeholder that would allow you to take future steps if you wanted to. But there's, there would be no really update that you would need to do. Really the next step in the funding is to actually submit a project that you're going to do where you would design something and then submit it to the Department of Health.
So this study was really just to help us to further discussion of what alternative to pursue?
When we started this process, we needed to identify in clearer terms what the real issues were in terms of, you know, what, what is the water system and how does it operate now? And what do we need to do to address those issues? And so when Jim and I started talking about this, that was the focus. And, and identifying what the costs were to, to address those issues. That's, and we needed to look at a thorough analysis of what is the water usage? What is, what are the projections for the water usage? And what do we need to do to meet all of those needs into the future? So that's what this is doing.
Okay.
So as far as, you know, Councilmember Bush, in terms of what your question is, you really don't have to take any action at all tonight. This is a presentation on the final report. We do make some, lay out a schedule moving forward, but you know, that isn't locked in stone. You know, the, the next step, when, if you were going to move forward with, with this recommendation, there would be some additional preliminary things that would have to happen. Primarily identifies, going into more detail into design and also looking at land. That's probably the first step is identifying a parcel that could be acquired for moving forward.
Is land acquisition an eligible cost for some of these low-interest loans?
Yes, it is. And, and so our prior incurred costs. So if you did move forward with a project, even the cost of like this study or future analysis can be submitted for reimbursement and get lumped into that loan. The only thing is that funding package does not get finalized until you actually bid a project. And so that's at the point then where you could get reimbursement. So if you were going to go through, design a project, implement a project, get a contractor, that could be 12 months, 24 months. And so these prior incurred costs could not be reimbursed until you get to that point. And land acquisition, as you said, would be one of those eligible costs.
You can hold that for five years or four years?
The prior incurred costs, I think they have set at three years, unless you have other circumstances that would, would allow them to extend that. But the application that was submitted to get on a funding list, that carries for five years. And even beyond that, at that point, you may, maybe would need to do some sort of update. But again, that effort's not a huge update.
And so, there's 2% interest on a, if you win the lottery and you get the state loan? Am I correct?
It's easier than winning the lottery. But I, yes, there, the state funding program is, is set up to help municipalities fund water projects. And I suspect you would get funding for a water tower. I've not had issues getting funding for a water tower. And again, that interest rate varies, but it's going to be well below market.
And so the cost of number, alternative number two, which you favor, is 4.3 million on the bottom of page five?
Yes.
Is that correct? 3.1 to 12.3?
Yes. Correct.
At 2%. So they fund the whole works, is that correct?
They fund the whole works, correct.
If you win. And then you get, it's 2% annually?
Yeah. I think roughly I've, I've run the, at 2%, every million dollars is about $60,000 a year in debt service payment. So if you add a $4 million loan, that'd probably be about $240,000 a year in loan payments, interest and principal.
Falls water bill, they'll go berserk. I mean, they're already complaining that we're higher than Forest Lake Centerville and North Branch is worse, I guess.
Well, that's what I was saying. I don't think there's enough users that you could do that unless you ran, unless you ran the project, you ran it in deficit and subsidized it with levying, which is what we had to do for the first however many years of our utilities.
But that got paid back through the general fund, I believe. Because those of us who lived over there and had businesses, we paid for the whole works, except for the people on Green Acres and senior deferrals.
No, I don't think, I mean, explain it, Jack. You know what I'm talking about. I mean, we, our, our enterprise funds ran in deficit until last year, this year?
There wasn't enough people hooked up.
That's right. And that's what I'm saying. I don't know that there's enough people that you'd be able to float this.
From a financing standpoint, our issue is the small customer base and low usage. So, you know, we'd have to do several models to see what the feasibility of it was, what it would do to people's water bills. That would be another part of the decision-making. Should we get some type of authority to be approved for any of these grants or PFA loans? We'll have to do that analysis too, to make sure that we can sell it politically and from a practical and economical standpoint.
Also, another item in this whole mix is that there are a number of people that are not connected, that have never been required to be connected to the system.
We just learned about that.
We have approximately 30 people. These, now this doesn't count vacant properties. We have 30 structures that should be connected, that aren't connected. We've had some discussions about that. And I think one thing we'll be looking at down the road is trying to get those people connected is one of our goals. That'll help some, but you know, from this base, we need a lot more than 30 connections. So I think one thing we need to try to look out too is project what our capacity needs are at total build-out of what we currently have in our service area and get some numbers from that and some projections. That'll help determine some of our ability to pay for this in the future also.
And when you, when you talk about a $240,000 a year bond payment, you're talking, right now, our whole total city budget's $5 million. So that's a lot. That's a big percent to add on to a small person, you know, percent of our, of our city.
And that's why I think that, I mean, the, the issue, if you, if you have 30 structures that aren't connected, that, that might be the first step that would-
Absolutely. Totally agree.
-be done in order to spread that cost because, you know, you have an investment in there since 2007, 2008, some, sometime when the whole system went in with the intent that at some point, everybody that's being served will need to be connected in order to pay for the system. And that hasn't happened.
I agree. Although I thought we were told a year ago that everybody was connected. So this is, the fact that there's still 30 outstanding is, was a surprise.
And to your point, Janet, I believe there was two that we forced to get on board, right? One was down by Batumnas Roadways was in their portion. We forced them to hook up. And then, and then there was another one down there.
Well, I mean, they all were supposed to. Some legitimately had deferrals or had requested and we did that. But I distinctly remember being told a year ago that every, you know, we were finally in the black on these enterprise funds. We were, everybody who was supposed to be hooked up, was hooked up, would be soon to be hooked up. But that's not true. So now we need to make sure that happens.
And I think from what we show in our enterprise fund- And I, I think from what we show in our enterprise funds, we're probably in the black to cover our basic operational cost. But there are still some costs we're absorbing on the administrative side.
Yep, yep.
And I'm not sure that we're covering all of our depreciation costs either. But operationally, we are in the black.
So you're right, I agree with you, Kevin.
And to your point, Kevin, Jim and I sat down, Jim did most of the work, but we did determine who isn't connected as far as being, having a structure on their property. There's still some vacant properties aren't connected, but that's gonna be a policy decision, is how we want to do those. But the ones that do have structures, where the service is passing and available to them, those are the ones that we are trying to develop a way to encourage them to connect as soon as possible.
So is the next step to look at those scenarios that you would run?
I, I think it is, I think we need to look at it a little bit more from our financial side and what our potential ability to pay is. And then get some information, too, and we get some more in September, when we, we'll see what this eligibility list is. And see if we qualify for any grant funds, and then work and see if there's a formula that would make it cost-effective for us to consider these options that you've developed.
Yeah, so it might be a, you know, next step might be a rate study.
Yeah.
To determine, you know, what would the impact of $4 million be on rates? With or without those 30, you know, users? And see, and see what the, what the real impact of that cost is.
Another funding option always is the bonding bill. You know, there wasn't a bonding bill this year, but that means that there's likely to be one in the tax year, in the budget year. So, and we, we actually made it in, as Senator Kuhn said, on her modest request for Hornsby. So that's always, I, I looked at all of the requests from cities this year, because we were in, and there were several that were looking at utility treatment centers. They're just, you know, it's the usual suspects that always come and, and ask, so.
So I wa, I wanna clarify that, because I think at the workshop, and you might not have been at the workshop, when we talked about what are the funding options? And I thought we couldn't, the only option was a low-interest loan.
Yeah, so this is actually where I was gonna go before the attorney jumped in, is yes. So the, the PFA does have grant programs, but you guys aren't gonna qualify for them. They're, they're affordability-based for residential users, and I think, given the high commercial usage here, it's gonna be hard to get those grants. And so direct bonding is probably gonna be your best avenue to getting whatever project you wanna do funded. PFA will have low-interest loans for you. That, that should be fairly straightforward. But I don't think the grant programs are gonna be able to help.
When you say direct bonding, you mean on the bonding bill from the state, correct?
Yes, correct.
Bond issuance on our part.
Yep. And, you know, obviously, some, going that route is, is kind of, you have to tell a story, right? Why, why you should get money over anybody else? And I think you have a bit of a story here, right? Is you're transitioning, you're in this transition phase, right? Where you have users that rely on your system, and you're adding users. And as you add users, you wanna be more robust to make sure people you add to the system have a good water supply, right? It's one thing to have people hook up, but if you, they hook up and then they have problems, that's not a good position either. But, so as you add more people, you are gonna want to be a more robust system, but it's very challenging for you to fund the things needed, because as you see, they're not cheap. I can't change the numbers on here, right? And so I think you can have a story there that explains why you guys are unique and why you could use it. And that's the angle you have to take.
I laugh because we're always in that position of explaining why we're, why we're unique. That's our middle name.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, it was helpful.
A lot of good information.
Good study.
Any other questions, anyone? Kevin, anything more from you?
I have nothing further, Mayor.
City Attorney Report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the item that's under the Attorney Report is, comes from the Personnel Committee. Megan Rogers worked with the Personnel Committee to finalize the contract for the city administrator. I'll go through just a couple modest changes from what you approved in your session, in your second meeting in May. I forget the date, so I think it was the 28th of May. So the, the salary would be set at $146,000. That was the amount that you approved. The request was for 10 additional vacation days, time accrued effective June 1st. 10 additional sick days, time accrued effective June 1st. And then on the termination provision, both the first and the second year, termination would have the same severance. Basically, six months of pay and benefits. The, the third year would be as, as written, I think it's one month. All of these changes went through the Personnel Committee. The Personnel Committee recommends approval, so. And I have one, when we get to it, I have one tweak to the, the contract itself. I'll explain the resolution that you have in front of you, Resolution 2404. There's a couple of things. It approves the contract and the package. It allows, since Mr. Davis will be signing on behalf of himself as the employee, the deputy clerk would then sign it, just to provide witness, that's just a technical issue. Sign both the contract and the resolution along with the mayor. So that's the resolution you have. And then the one tweak I wanted to make, just in proofing this against the red-line version. I don't know why we don't have page numbers, it just isn't that hard to add. But on page two of the, the employment agreement, you'll see in 13A1, it says termination with one, within one year or two year, within years one or two. But then it should be, that's just a heading, so it should be also added to the, the line that follows. If employment termination is noticed to employ within the first or second year. So I would add, or second. So when you make your motion, it would be with that, those changes. So with that, I stand for question, or you have members of the Personnel Committee here who can also answer questions about this. I will just say it went very smoothly, and I think all parties were happy with the, the process, and that we're here tonight to recommend the employment contract.
So this is Rob, my only question would be for the Personnel Committee. Is this similar to what, as far as the vacation and the, the sick leave? Is that very similar to what Elizabeth was getting in the past? Or is this something more than what we've done in the past? I, I was never able to see what she made, or...
The vacation and sick leave, she accrued at the same rate that the employees do, and so would Jack. He's just, because he's starting at zero, he's just asking for, for 10 days to be front-loaded.
For this year.
For this year.
Okay.
That's not an, that's not an ongoing request. And I believe this salary is, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Elizabeth's salary was 138, am I right there? 138,000. So it's a little higher than, higher than what she was making.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
But definitely in line with our, our range, which we did.
Correct.
I should say Megan did heavy research to make sure that we were in line with other communities of our size.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I can make the motion. And I do concur with Bill that it was a very smooth process, so thank you. Let's see, I move to approve Resolution 24-04, sent to the City Council on June 10th, 2024, as an attachment to the June 12th, 2024 meeting packet, with the exception of a change in Section 13A I, to read, to add first year or second year of the agreement.
This is Janet, I second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
And I would like to say thank you, and I look forward to serving the City Council and the residents of Columbus. I really appreciate the opportunity, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Bill?
Yes, I will just make sure that we get a clean version with that change emailed over tomorrow, so it can be signed up, and it is effective June 1st.
I know Cheryl, the payroll person, was happy that that was the effective date. It makes her payroll work well, so.
All right, that's it?
That's all I have, thank you.
Mayor and City Councilmembers report, Ron.
Other than going to the open house at Truckaline, I just wanna say, I don't know, I have to ask Jack, the billboard or electronic thing out there still on the blink?
The west side works perfectly. The south side or the east side is non-operative. Jim and I have discussed that. He's getting some quotes or somebody to look at it from some of the sign companies to see what we can do to get that repaired. Again, that's something that we may have to look at, that may be a replacement item at some point down the road, because it's been in there for probably over 20 years. There's a lot of electronic components in there. They're probably maybe on their last leg, but it is on our agenda to get that east side fixed and operative again.
And, and one other point I wanna make, this weekend Forest Lake's gonna have that Red Litter Day, whatever you wanna call it, on the 18th. Or what is, what's Saturday, 15th? And all the counties are welcome to come over there to jump, dump off electronics at the library.
Oh, okay.
And the only reason I brought that up is because I thought if we could put it on our, our website or whatever, 'cause I think a lot of people don't understand that.
There's reciprocity, yeah.
And we can go over there and dump paint and all that stuff. So I know there's not many people listening tonight, but might be a little late, but something to keep an eye on.
Thank you.
I always seem to make it. Where'd the mayor go?
Oh dear. Well, I, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing.
I just have one thing. June 6th, we had our Sunrise River WMO meeting. We approved a data practices policy, which we did not have prior to that. And the process to access the $75,000 grant that we were awarded from Bowser through that water-based implementation funding process, we finalized that. And so those are the two main topics, and our next meeting is on September 5th.
This is Rob, and all I really had to report on Ron covered it. The Blaine Brothers slash Truckaline facility, that grand opening, it's a great event, I thought. And we all got to interact with public and businesses, and almost seemed like an EDA thing at the same time, so, no, it was good, but that's all I have.
Got a nice thank you from Dean for attending. And that was, he appreciated everybody being there and, and wanted to, I guess, promote the transportation industry, which I, I loved how he put that. I thought it was, he, he called out the fact that people don't like, I think, what did he say? Big smelly trucks, but they're a great industry, and he's right.
My report is as thundering, but no lightning.
Oh, thank you. How about hail?
No.
So are wells.
And I had a note from Dean, too, that thanked everyone for attending his grand opening. I hope you were able to see the supports provided by many of our business partners, suppliers, and customers. We look forward to our business representing the beautiful city of Columbus for many years to come. So that was nice. He said to pass it on to everybody.
Yep.
And we did. Planning Commission report, nope. EDA report, nope. Public Works, Jim?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
City Administrator, Jack?
Again, my only comment is that, again, I look forward to serving the City Council and the residents of Columbus for many years to come. And again, thank you for the opportunity. I really and truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you, thank you for agreeing to be our city administrator.
Personnel Committee.
You already did it.
We had it, that was it.
All right. Announcements and reminders, Planning Commission, June 18th at 6:00 PM. City Hall will be closed on June 19th. City Council meeting on the 26th. And by then, the days will be getting shorter.
Oh, stop.
Absentee voting starts at City Hall, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
What's the date that that starts?
June 28th.
Okay.
Okay, so now we'll move to a closed session to cons...
We have to excuse our...
We have to excuse everybody. Well, you, you have to give the announcement publicly, so you're on the right track. And then you can excuse folks.
The City Council meeting will be closed to consider offers to purchase city-owned real estate identified as PID 24322212-005 and PID 24322211-0006, pursuant to Minnesota Statutes, Section 13D dash, or Point 05, Subdivision 3C3. How'd I do?
Good.
All right, so everybody out.